Calling them in to order, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Here.
Depega.
Here.
Graziano.
Here.
Councilmember Natori, I'm not the president this evening. Councilmember Robell.
Here.
Juma Burke.
Present.
Mayor Melman.
Here. Sunshine.
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting was published in the Thursday for Great Third 2022 editions of the Bellville Times and Star Ledger. A copy of the annual meeting notice has been posted on the Bellville Town Hall bulletin board and copies are filed in municipal service office.
Play the leadins.
I play the leadins to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Switzerland. One nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our agenda is, this is a combined conference regular meeting. We're only having one meeting this month, so we're doing our conference traditionally. That's the first meeting in the month, so we're going to do it now. What you'll see on the agenda are various discussions. Any council member or professional can put anything on to discuss with the council. I will just advise you that you're listening to the council deliberate and have conversations. This is not a public forum for participation. If you hear something that you're interested in, or you have a question, or you want to make a comment about anything you hear, you can most certainly do so during the public commenting portion of this meeting. So the first item on our agenda for today's council discussions is Councilmember Cosarelli. He has some street dedication to discuss.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Yeah, so I have a list here of, well, two things. First off, we do street dedications here in Bellville. We usually do them for our veterans who have passed away in Bellville. And we do it occasionally for other significant historical people in our township, whether dead or alive. So along those lines, I have two separate issues here that I want to bring up to the council. First is, I was, someone reached out to me from Lonnie Bunch's family, and I think they also reached out to Councilman Robell and the mayor about doing a street dedication in his honor, which I believe is Beach Street.
Beach?
Beach. Beach Street. I know he's not a veteran, but he is a very, very, very important figure in Bellville currently. So I know we usually try to keep it for veterans and not to take anything away from the veterans, but he is a very important figure. I know we attempted to have him come to town a few times, and he had a very busy schedule in the past. And I guess his schedule has lightened up a little bit. You'd be able to attend if we did something like that. So that's the first one. The second one, I have a list of about, I don't know, maybe a few dozen veterans that we, we did pass this in the year 2016, early, early 2016, six, fourteen, sixteen, yeah, that we've only done maybe about half of them. So I have a list of ones that we did do a very big resolution back, you know, about eight years ago. So if the council wants, we could continue and do some names on this list. I'll give it to the manager. Actually, I did get this from the clerk's office. So it is a resolution we passed in 2000. Right now.
Right. Seventeen, sixteen?
Sixteen. Yeah.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
June sixteen.
Yeah. So I bring that to everyone who attends. Do you want to look at the list?
Councilman, any, great idea. Any streets have already been named since then that may be overlapping? Has anybody looked into that?
Yeah, we, I started crossing off the ones that we did already.
Yeah, but I'm saying is there one that's out there and there's someone that lives on a street? That would be two or three.
Oh, possibly. Yeah, possibly.
Okay.
Yeah, we have to go through it and see.
Okay, cool.
Do we, is street naming the best way to honor? I know in Lynnhurst or in North Arlington, they're doing the nice flags that are on the light poles with a picture of.
Yeah, I love that idea.
People of Veterans Way.
I love that idea.
Just I think it does confuse some people when they see a street name that's got some street names to it.
Yep, yep.
I'm all for honoring our vets.
Yeah.
I know North Arlington just did it. I know bleeding municipalities, every year they have displays. It's the pennants that go on the light pole.
Bobby and I went to the.
On the light pole, sorry.
Bobby and I have all the big work with hardware and the flags. And we also have the applications on how other towns have tried to.
North Arlington is definitely doing it now. Something like Lonnie Bunch.
I got that, yeah.
Who lived on a certain street, and he's not a veteran. Maybe that's a street dedication. But maybe the veterans are now incorporated. Maybe we surround the memorial on Union Avenue. It's just an, I mean, I'm in support no matter what.
Yeah. Yeah, we can discuss it, you know, moving forward, but I just wanted to bring it up tonight.
While we're on street dedications, I'll just add in, I know I've been in contact with Bonnie Rafferty with regard to potentially do something to honor her son. That little driveway or that street at the heist at the Municipal Stadium Complex.
Yeah.
Was something that was thrown out there to honor him, maybe.
Yeah.
But we'll just add that to this discussion and let the manager do it.
Yeah, definitely.
Anybody else?
Anthony.
Oh.
Thank you. Got a little distracted.
Okay. Next item, Mr. Iacono, are we going to push this to the next conference?
Yeah, if it's okay with the council, since it was Councilman Atari's request, maybe we could table it until the next meeting.
Sit them in. Okay, we reported the manager.
Sure, so be relatively brief, but we do have a lot to cover tonight. I did want to give the council and the residents a little update. The track and field, what we would consider the middle turf field inside the track, near completion, well, probably about eighty percent. We're, you know, shooting for hopefully a completion date of July 1st. They're laying out the turf now, and that is in the middle. Once that's complete, then they finished with the rubberized running track, and drainage is all done. So the project, if you haven't seen it, it's coming along really nice. And again, we're hoping July 1st is a kickoff. And also, just to give the council an update, the, our engineer has been able to come up with a design to provide for three pickleball courts. This would be directly across from the tennis courts. And there is a good possibility that we'll have this, the pickleball courts, completed by the end of the summer. So that's, that would be pretty exciting. On tonight's, on tonight's agenda, we're introducing the 2022 budget. Again, we'll go into the details at the budget hearing, which will be tentatively scheduled for June 28th. We need permission to adopt, but we're shooting for an adoption of the budget on June 28th. Just to let the residents know, our budget is coming in with, I'd like to say, a relatively strong budget. It has a modest increase of $47.89 on the average home. Again, you know, the average home fluctuates, but $47.
It's not hundreds of dollars, Mr. Manager?
I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. What's that?
Not hundreds of dollars?
Oh, no. Yeah, no. $47.89. And again, so we know that it's not a one-time shot budget. We didn't use all of the American Recovery Act money, which we have until the end of twenty-two, I'm sorry, twenty-three. So there's a million dollars left over in the American Recovery Act. And we, as you all know, we did have a relatively large settlement with Claramas last year. Again, that money is not used in this budget. So, you know, it's, what we're trying to do is we're trying to stabilize taxes and not address it in short term. So, you know, I like to say, you know, we're doing, doing our best. There was a $2 million increase in health insurance. So I know that is a priority for us to address this year. Because again, just the cost when you get a $2 million increase in any budget is very difficult. So again.
While we're still on the budget.
Yeah.
How is it, you said that we're going to address that or try to address that?
We, we've taken great pride here in the last couple of years to eliminating the workforce. We have less employees today than we did two or three years ago. One department alone is down five people. That's 150 to 200,000 dollars a year out of that. But it just gets eclipsed totally when insurance goes up by $2 million. You can't cut enough or save enough when insurance goes up $2 million. And I don't think the residents understand that. We can't save enough, we can't cut enough, we can't cut the budget enough, you can't cut enough paperclips, you can't cut enough employees. We've done all that, yet when insurance goes up $2 million, it just wipes all those gains out. So what is it that other, does every other town just take it and just keep increasing taxes? So again, we look for every alternative possible, any alternative solution. And again, we have in the past, maybe scratched the surface of going over to the state plan. We're going to revisit that and see if, again.
Been talked about for years.
It's, it's, it's not an easy, it's not an easy challenge, but, you know, we'd like to, hopefully, all employees come together and for the benefit of everyone, possibly consider. The state plan right now is in, you know, probably over 200 municipalities, maybe 300 municipalities out of 565. So obviously, the state plan is something that we should be able to consider at least.
Anthony, if I may, isn't Board of Education on the state plan?
That is correct.
Right. Have we did a touch point throughout the town and see who areas would be interested in that? Has that been addressed at all?
You know, there's language in the contract, in all the contracts, that allow us to sit down with all the bargaining units anytime that we have a program to present. So as soon as we, so to speak, get our ducks in order, as it pertains to health insurance, we'll be sitting down with the unions and sharing that information with them.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, so our 2022 Summer Concert Series kicks off on July 7th. We will be officially sharing all of the bands, but basically every Thursday in July and August, with one Thursday in September because of Labor Day. So last year was a huge success. We're going to kick off on July 7th with the Beatles mystery tour. So it's pretty exciting. The Beatles are going to invade Bellville, so that's exciting. July 1st is a very obviously exciting day in Bellville because of the reorg and also that, those activities. But it just happens to be kind of forced to consider doing our Firework Independence Day on July 1st. The pandemic had put a major burden on the firework companies because of all the shows that were canceled in the past. There's a limited amount of shows on July 3rd and July 4th. And just to get an appreciation of the value, the difference between July 1st and July 4th is over 50% difference in cost. So we're putting together our Independence Day celebration. Right now, it's targeted for Friday, July 1st. And I think it's just going to be a great day overall, so, and we end the night with fireworks. So we'll have some more information to share. Last thing I just want to just cover is on the agenda, quite a few resolutions tonight on the consent agenda, but I do want to touch base. We have blue collar, white collar, we have the Supervisors Unit, and we also have the PBA. All of these contracts were negotiated, so we didn't use, we didn't use attorneys. Obviously, there's a substantial savings to the town. We're not using attorneys, and we've been able to successfully execute these agreements. Again, the no hidden secret, in some cases, it's one and a half percent to 2% at the max. It's 2% per year. So again, again, keeping in mind and, you know, keeping our austerity program, so to speak, when it comes to the budget. So you'll see a one and a half percent, 2%. Also, on the agenda, there's a contract for the chief of police and fire chief. This has not been in place in previous years. And again, when somebody asks us, why would you want a contract for the chief of police? Well, the fire chief and the police chief, normally they follow the contracts that are below them. But because it's good housekeeping, if you don't have anything in writing, you, there's always the ability for a floor. So again, there's nothing in the contract that they haven't received in the past, whether it's vacation days, whether it's sick days, things of that nature. Everything is, they were using past practice, and they were using the contracts in the PBA and FBA. So it's just, this is good housekeeping to have a formal contract in place. And that's all on the agenda, on the consent agenda. And certainly, any questions, always available.
Questions? I heard all the contracts, great. The one contract I didn't hear is, why is the fire not on?
Of course, we received it this afternoon at, yeah, about 4:45. They, their attorney, their attorney was away, and they couldn't get it back to us in time. So we received it today. We sent it to our labor attorney to sign off on it, and then he shoots the mayor an email. Tells the mayor it's okay to sign.
So then, next meeting, all contracts will be?
Well, the next, well, we have to come back with the public employees, but police and fire will be good for four years.
Okay, good.
So next meeting, we should have the fire on?
Yeah, we have it in our hands, but we only have it today. Their attorney wasn't.
Any other questions? And you mentioned July 1st. I just want you to reiterate again, that has nothing to do with the inauguration. I swear again, it's totally separate issues, correct?
Well, you're going to take credit for it anyway, but yes, you're correct.
So you did, you did say something that was good, is a 50%. So 4th of July falls on a Monday. We were open to maybe doing it on the 3rd. Bellville's had a really good run the last couple of years of fireworks and really getting a good name for ourselves. So we were open to 3rd, but as the manager said, with COVID and the other towns coming out of COVID, they all booked. There's only a few companies in the state that do it, and they all take the most money, which means the bigger municipalities like Jersey City and such. So Friday, the 1st is a 40 or 50% savings. You forgot part two of that, though. You want to break the, you want to say the good news, or should I? How we're going to end the Summer Concert Series?
Oh, yes, so we, we have been working very closely with the firework company. And we asked them that if we were going to settle for Friday, July 1st, since, you know, the 3rd and 4th were out of reach, would they come back and finish our Summer Concert Series similar to the way they did last year? It went bang. We had a brief firework show, which was spectacular.
Yeah, that's a great way to end the season, I think. Okay. Anybody else? No? Next item on the agenda is the report of the mayor. I was going to reiterate about the 4th of July being the 1st, but the manager already did that. I did see a draft that the entire, now the manager teased everybody and said that we're going to start the Summer Concert Series off with Beatles. But I did see the flyer with all the different bands in it. That flyer should be finalized this week or so and be out there for publication. But rest assured, any resident of Bellville knows that on Thursday during July and August, you can simply walk or ride or ride a bike over to the Municipal Stadium Complex and the high school and see a great show. There's even talk about maybe on a Wednesday, doing, doing a movie series. So potentially, it could be every Wednesday and Thursday in the summer, July and August. Movies on one night, concerts on the next. Manager and I will be discussing that this week. Upcoming events, this coming Monday, Memorial Day ceremonies, as usual. We do 11 o'clock at the Ductreform Church. We also then head over to the Veterans Memorial on Union in Taona for 12, two different ceremonies. Public is always welcome to come. We have National Trails Day coming up on Saturday, June 4th. We're going to meet at the high school at 9 o'clock. Check information on our township website for that. And we've been promoting that. Our first ever farmer's market is coming. June 18th is the first Saturday. From thereafter, it will be the third Saturday of every month through October, something that I know a lot of people are interested in. If you are interested in maybe vending or putting up a table there, information on our town website for that. We had some recent past events. It's finally good to be able to report past events. For a while, we weren't having any. But community bike ride, highly, highly successful this past weekend. If you saw Saturday, Police Department has always does a great job. It's events like those that really put an exclamation point on their commitment to community policing and community service. And from the looks of it, the way the residents and the way the town comes out for them, the town certainly responds and appreciates that level of commitment. Also, this weekend was the St. Anthony Feast. I was there. Great event, great time for a great cause. Also this weekend, Bellville Nutley Columbus Day Parade Committee hosted fundraiser. We participate in about six or seven or even eight events, it seems like, in preparation for that event that takes place in October to honor a townie heritage. Library had Storytime with the Cop, and I'm told, I think I saw on the town website, it's coming up again, June 2nd.
I'm sure it's exact date it's coming.
I think it's June 2nd on the township website. It's probably also on the library website, so check that out. The chief, the police chief and I had the chief last week working overtime. We attended a Neighborhood Watch meeting in Bridgebrook at 7 o'clock last Thursday. We had a bunch of different residents there, and there was good news to be had for all. The chief had a report of crime or calls for service, I should say, for that address at Bridgebrook. Very little going on there. It's a good thing to have, it's a good problem to have, that there were very, very few calls for service. A lot of it is just neighbor to neighbor, who's outside smoking, who's playing music loud. No real crime happening there, which is good, we're glad to see. But we love to see communities and neighborhoods being involved in neighborhood policing programs. There's also talk of a second one that wants to start up. The Police Department would most certainly support that. Lastly, I'll end with news. As you can see on our township website, the CERT team is still looking for members. CERT team is our Community Emergency Response Team, or Citizens Emergency Response Team, I believe. If you're interested in joining the CERT team, please check out our township website. All information is there. Next item on our agenda, like I said, this is a, we're considering this the first meeting because it's only one meeting in a month, so we don't really have standing committees. We have basically ad hoc committees. Any council member that wants to jump into a specific topic is certainly most, has the right to do so. So Deputy Mayor is not here, so I'll just start way to my right. Councilman Robell.
Good.
Councilman Cosarelli.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You hit most of my topics, but one more thing I'd like to report on. I had a meeting through the Green Team and through the grant programs that we do, also with some members of the Board of Ed about some intersection that's a little troublesome next to the middle school. We are going to be painting that through a grant. It's going to be, it's going to have some signage, some, some, I forgot the name of the cones that stand up. It's going to have, we're going to paint the entire intersection. It's going to be decorative, but it's also going to help with the parking situation with the traffic because it is a nightmare out there after school when the kids get out. I know our Police Department's been helping out, but hopefully this, moving forward, this helps, and it comes free through a grant that we got, so. Awesome chat, yeah.
I apologize, I did say Deputy Mayor is not here. She's not physically here, but she is on the call. Naomi, do you have anything to add?
Nothing at this moment.
Perfect. Councilman Burke?
No, I have nothing.
Councilman Graziano?
Yes, nothing to committee, but I just have a couple of questions for the manager, which is a short bit, okay?
Yeah.
So I want to, I want to start off with the water, the golf course, and some just things that I found out and looked and was part of as the last couple of months up to the election. So there's a brim, a brim that was put up by the golf course along the houses on Fairway Avenue. And when looking at them, it's not consistent all the way across the properties. They leave it by, by a tree, and they leave it open. So if water or a company is going to come into property anyway, have we, have they been in conversation with us, telling us or telling our code department, hey, we're going to do this, and this is how we're going to do it? Because I believe that's on Bellville property. So, well, their property, but on Bellville side, if you will.
Yes, so we have been in constant contact with the golf course because obviously residents have called the construction department, have called the state, things of that nature. So we did meet with DEP.
Oh.
Okay. DEP did issue, issue the golf course a warning that they did work without taking out a permit. But.
That's the golf course or the cemetery?
No, this is the golf course got the warning, the cemetery got the violation. I'll get to that one later. But the, excuse my backdoor in this dialogue, this is between managers in the council. But so the, when we met, we met with OEM, myself, the chief, and DEP basically said as much as they needed to take out a permit, which they didn't, they received a warning letter, okay? They were in total performance, and the work that they did did not escalate to any kind of violation. So the work that the golf course did was inspected by DEP. We met with DEP, and they basically said that they were within their rights to do that work.
Right, and that's okay? Not okay, but my point is, if you're going to build up, right? And you're going to have this, why would you leave a tree empty? And then the water is going to come this way, it's still going to come in. So my point is.
They're still planting trees, they were.
These are existing trees, but do we get to, does our code department get to look at that and say, no, that's not the right, if you're going to keep this brim, let's keep it consistent all the way around? Question?
Yes, and I will reconfirm the answer tomorrow. But our building department was up there. Anything that they had the ability to enforce, they did. And in some cases, it's, it's their prerogative.
Okay, no, that's one. With the golf course, and this is again, talking, open dialogue, talking to residents who just get out there. Would the golf course, the golf owners be wanting to buy any of the homes? In case the, in case the owners wanted to go buy a home, you know, hey, I want to sell my home. Got a lot of money, has that ever been offered up to people?
So I certainly can't speak on behalf of the golf course owner, but, you know, that, I would say that if anybody showed any interest in selling their home, I would certainly say that there could be open dialogue on it because, you know, never say never.
Okay, and one last thing. So we're going to get back to, I want to get back to, because I grabbed the bull by the horns a little bit. So there's a pump, came up a while ago on Fairway Avenue. Now, this is not the means to the end or the fix, but this is proactiveness. So back in 2016, and then some, apparently we get from a company, a one-time rep pump services, same company, R and R Pump, as it goes on, they give recommendations. And one of the recommendations, and it looks like it's been constant recommendations, is where our pumps are, when it fills up, and it could be from a little rain, a lot of rain, or something other than that, not the size of pumps, but how it was built back then, right? Electric pumps, everything is in one well. I've never seen it, couldn't tell you all my life, never been down in it, just secondhand. Something to look at, that's, this is just dialogue, something to look at. Maybe it's time, based on recommendations, they take that electric stuff, right? They take everything up and maybe move it up to a pole, so this way the pump can constantly pump. I mean, and then whether it helps or helps, you know, whether it's two or three or four inches, again, I'm not that engineer, but from the recommendations that come across, it's been consistent that something like that should be done. Past your desks, I don't know. I took the bull by the horns and I looked into it on my own. It's something I'm sharing with you for the first time, so if you wanted to look into it.
Yeah, and the only thing I would say is, and Bobby was working on the pump upgrade, however, we, I think we even went out and had a proposal. Then we were going to include it in the CHS capital budget. And then I believe it was the director of the council that wanted to go out, hire a engineer and.
To do his own thing.
To look at the holistic approach of the entire program. So then we didn't put the pump in the capital budget because we said before we put that pump in the capital budget, and then a report comes back that it's either the wrong size or right. So I think we did go out for the.
Okay, that's my next question, where's the RFQ?
Give that to Kelly.
That was a few months ago.
Yeah. To receive it?
We received several.
Yes.
So I guess at this point, we'll make, we have to make sure that.
We distribute them to the council and at the pleasure of the council, if we want to hire one. I mean, we did receive several, correct? I think that there was at least four, maybe.
I believe so.
So we, we can hand those four out, and July 1st is a good day to hire professionals. July 1st might be a perfect day to hire a professional.
Okay. So I.
Anything else?
I think that is it.
Through the chair, just one question. I know that we were also talking about, like Tom was saying, actually pushing it up the hill a little bit. It's one of the things, especially the controller and some of the other things, right? Because that's, it's getting flooded out on the street. Yeah, moving it out of.
Right now, it's basically, it looks like a submarine.
Right.
All right, they're looking to abandon that and move the pumps into the manhole, and then all the electrical stuff to the side up a little bit on the right away. That's basically what, what we were talking about, what they were looking to do.
And that, and that will be part of probably the.
How do you move it then?
Right, how do you move it?
One of the things, and you can confirm or find out, I've heard that Bloomfield actually got some Blue Acres money.
So what kind of money?
Blue Acres, it's basically the Blue Acres money. Blue Acres, it's basically the Blue Acres money. When you have this kind of flooding, they go in and they give you money to, you know, either remediation or basically buying properties.
Now they got money to buy houses.
Yeah, I think that's basically.
County, county debt.
Great, thank you, Ann.
Okay, nothing else, we'll move on to the approval minutes.
May combine conference, combine conference, a regular meeting of August 17.
Make a motion?
Second.
We have a motion made in second to approve the minutes, Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depeña.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumel Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes. Next item on our agenda is special action. We have the. Script? No.
There's no script. Just a resolution to change the 2022 municipal budget.
Make a motion, second. We have a motion made in second to introduce the 2022 municipal budget. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depeña.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumel Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes. Communications?
Request received from St. Anthony's Church for permission to conduct a procession in the streets on Sunday, May 29.
That's, goes through the normal process, please department will handle it. What's any issues there? Next item on the agenda is ordinances, A, ordinances for introduction.
Number one, bond ordinance providing for the acquisition and installation of equipment for the water utility system in and by the Township of Belvong, the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $125,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $125,000 bonds or notes to the township to finance the cost thereof.
Need a motion? Motion introduced, second. We have a motion made in second to introduce, Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depeña.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumel Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes. Two.
Bond ordinance providing for phase one of the lead service line replacement project in and by the Township of Belvong, the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $5 million, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $5 million bonds or notes to the township to finance the cost thereof.
Motion for introduction, second. Motion made in second for introduction, Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depeña.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumel Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes.
Number three, an ordinance to exceed municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank.
Need a motion? Motion, second. We have a motion made in second, Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depeña. Graziano.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumel Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes. Four.
An ordinance amending Chapter 19 of the codified ordinances of the Township of Belvong.
Need a motion, have it, need a second? Second. We have a motion made in second for introduction, Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depeña.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumel Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes. B, ordinances for public hearing, second and final reading.
Ordinance number one, for public hearing and ordinance to amend, revise general ordinances of the Township of Belvong, Chapter 8-16, handicap parking spaces.
Motion open for public? Second. We have a motion made in second to open for public, Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depeña.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumel Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes. We're open for public commenting on this ordinance and this ordinance only. If you have a question about this ordinance, now would be your time to get your question answered. Hearing none, signal, I'll have a motion to close and move for final adoption? Motion. Second. We have a motion made in second to close and move for final adoption, Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depeña.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumel Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes.
Ordinance number two, for public hearing and ordinance to amend ordinance number 3641, creating permanent positions and adopting league classification and compensation plans.
Need a motion to open for public? Make a motion? Second. We have a motion made in second to open for public hearing, Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depeña.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumel Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes, we're open for public hearing on this ordinance and this ordinance only. Anybody have any questions about this ordinance? I'm going to call upon you, ask you to please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Mayor Rosso, 95 miles to. Just a question, is this, this is an existing union contract position, full-time or part-time?
This is a full-time position, I'm not sure of the union, but.
She's something here, says, oh, one, two.
Okay, so.
Now, the only question I have, because when I looked at the contracts for the BMBA firefighters and police departments, I noticed the range is small, but I'm just wondering why you have a big range of $11,000.
You, you should realize, Mayor, that we're deleting it.
We deleted it.
This is a, you can thank us all, but this is a $96,000 year position that will no longer be available.
Not for a change, I'm going to thank you.
You're very welcome. Anybody else want to thank us for deleting a $96,000 position?
I'd like that.
Going once for thank yous, going twice, deleting a $96,000 position. No?
Thank you.
You're very welcome, thank you. Okay, I'm going to entertain a motion to close and move for final adoption. We have a motion made in second to close and move for final adoption, Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depeña.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumel Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes.
Ordinance number three, for public hearing and ordinance amending Chapter 19 of the codified ordinances of the Township of Belvong.
Okay, yeah, we're gonna, well, we could, I'll just leave it. So are we tabling or deleting? Well, we're defeating. We get defeated. So we, just to let the public know, on first reading, number. Number four is an introduction to amend this Chapter 19. So we reintroduced a brand-new ordinance that we just approved on first reading. This is the second reading of a prior ordinance. Obviously, you have the right to speak during public commenting, but I think you can tell by the tone of the council that this is probably going to be defeated. And therefore, next council meeting, we'll have the one that was on first reading on for second. So this will be, I believe, should be defeated this evening. But, yeah, without further ado, we need to open it up for public hearing anyway, so I need a motion? Motion. We have a motion made in second to open for public hearing, Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depeña.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notoriety. I'm sorry. Strumel Burke?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin, sorry guys.
Yes. So we're open for public commenting on this ordinance only, we do believe that this is going to be defeated, sir?
Good evening, Michael Sheldon, 47 Place Street. For my edification, could you quickly explain what the difference is between the introduced ordinance of number four tonight and the one that is apparently going to be defeated? Is there a quick explanation?
Yeah, I mean, the best way I could describe it is, the one that was originally introduced at the last meeting was done in-house, the township attorney amended the ordinance to what he thought was going to be our satisfaction. In the meantime, we have decided to engage the, an outside law firm to go ahead and do a complete rewrite of the entire ordinance, which includes, the entire section, which includes parameters on how the escrow funds are handled and dispersed, and who can take money from the escrow, and what professionals and what criteria they have. So it was a more comprehensive rewrite of an outside law firm, not done in-house.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. Are you anticipating finally doing away with 19-1 altogether? Or is this new law firm going to make further tweaks to 19-1?
I think that section is being rewritten totally, it's still going to be called 19. I don't think there's a reason to change the number. But that whole section is completely being rewritten after today, I'm sure you could get a copy of it from the clerk.
I will, I will do that. I just want to remind you, it's been about six weeks since I presented to you the legal opinion of Michael Kates on April 12, Michael, Michael Kates, I'm sure in one of the days.
Sir, this is not on this particular ordinance?
It is, it is.
Okay.
When Mr. Kates analyzed the planning board situation here, with particular attention to 19-1, at the end of his first paragraph, his seven-page legal opinion, which Mr. Tevito said on public record is tantamount to a judicial decision, he writes, "My conclusions are that the township council and not the mayor is the appointing authority since July of 1990." And, and this is the most important part, "And the retention of Section 19-1 in the township code is contrary to the council manager form of government for the following reasons." I won't waste everyone's time tonight, this document's been made publicly available, I'm sure you've all had time to read through this, but Mr. Kates gives a very eloquent and powerful compelling argument why 19-1 has ceased to exist 32 years ago when we switched from the commissioner form of government to council manager. So he, I, and many others, including members of the OAE, Mr. Martino, believed that what's going on here with your continued efforts to pump life into 19-1 is false, it's a mockery of the law.
Okay, if you don't have any specific comments about the ordinance that were about the defeat, I think.
I'm glad it's being defeated, at least for the moment. But I also want to say that when, when Mr. Tevito, under her letter, well, her email.
Sir, if it's not about this particular, I'm not going to hear about Mr. Tevito or the planning board, I'm not going to hear that.
She also said the same thing.
You can speak about that at public commenting, okay?
She said the same, essentially the same thing.
Thank you.
That Mr. Kates' opinion carries a tremendous weight.
It has nothing to do with us voting on this ordinance right now.
And stopping 19-1, purring it once and for all, and not trying to continue its usage another day.
I have no idea what the argument against a Roman numeral 19 is, but this is being completely rewritten.
Well, with a smile on your face, I'm sure you know how to read, and you've had the chance to look at Mr. Kates' opinion. As so have many other.
I have not, actually.
You haven't.
Sorry, missed a point.
That tells us a lot, that tells us a lot, right?
Okay, sir, if you're not going to speak on this ordinance that were about the defeat, then I need you to take a seat. Anybody else on this ordinance and this ordinance only? Mr. Frantantoni. Once again, just so the public knows, more than likely, this is about to be defeated.
Well, I don't want to say thank you for the defeat, but what I want to say, finally, you paid attention to the citizens. But Mr. Town Attorney here made some errors, he didn't interpret the law properly.
Mr. Frantantoni, I need you to speak on this ordinance that were about the defeat, not about anybody's actions.
I'm speaking on this ordinance.
Speak on it, please.
You're defeating it finally, after you caused, ordinance number three, I'm speaking on. You're going to defeat this tonight, supposedly, all right? But that's after you caused the citizens dollars from our pocket to get legal opinions, then you were wrong. And now, thank you for doing this because it was wrong to begin with. So this is an admission of your role, and you didn't listen to the citizen that told you. Mr. Sheldon had it, hired an attorney, spent money out of his pocket. I and four others had to spend money and buck when you illegally appointed the first Ms. Quammen to the board, illegally.
Mr. Frantantoni, on this ordinance, please, sir.
On this ordinance.
Okay, that has nothing to do with Ms. Quammen.
You don't want to hear it.
That's nothing to do with Ms. Quammen.
No, it does. It does because you illegally appointed her to the board, and it cost us money, the citizens, to hire an outside attorney to prove your role. And then you took her off the board. And the same thing now, the other night, you held an illegal meeting. You don't have proper.
Mr. Frantantoni, on this ordinance, please, you can speak about anything you want during public commenting. I need you to stay on this ordinance that were about the defeat.
I don't know what else to tell you. I mean, you want to be blind, you just want to talk and you don't want to listen. I'm speaking on this ordinance. And the reason you're eliminating this ordinance, because you're wrong. And I want to make the public aware of the reasons why you're deleting this.
You're well aware of your opinion.
So let's pay attention to the law from now on, so don't cost the citizen. You know, we come here, many of us with many years of experience, maybe before you were born. So sometimes we come here with information to help the town, not to fight the town. But you like to fight us, and you cost the citizens money to fight, and the bottom line is, we were correct.
Thank you.
You and this attorney were wrong.
Anybody else on this ordinance and this ordinance only? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to just close public commenting. Motion. We have a motion made in second to close public commenting only, Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depeña.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumel Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes. I'll entertain a motion to defeat or to approve, I'm going to vote no. We have a motion.
Motion to defeat.
I have a motion to defeat. We have a motion to, so now a motion to defeat is made in second. A yes vote is to defeat.
Yep.
Yes.
A yes vote is to defeat.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, we have a motion made in second to defeat the ordinance, Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depeña.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumel Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes.
The ordinance is defeated.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, I need a motion to entertain public, open public comments. Motion. We have a motion made in second to open public commenting, Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depeña.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumel Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes. So we are at the portion of the meeting which is called public commenting. Residents choosing to speak, I'm going to ask you to please come forward, state your name and address for the record. You do have five minutes to speak on topics. We hope that those topics have something to do with the township. If you want to talk about the Mets or the Yankees or the weather, you are so inclined to do so, but we prefer to keep all comments to government-type business. Floor is open, do we have anybody for public commenting? Sir? Just remind you to state your name and address at our place.
Yes, I am the one, Michael Shapiro, 712, Geralman Street, Belvong. I just want to thank the town manager today for hopefully working something out for me. And also, I want a special shout-out to Yara, Boslett, Roberta, and Yessenia. So if you could let them know that I want to thank them for all the work that they've done. And once again, I want to try to work something out with the town manager for all this help. So I want to thank them, that's it, I appreciate it, I'll keep it posted.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Free thank yous today, Mr. Frantantoni.
Phyllis Frantantoni, Resolution Number Seven, is this to hire the trash contractor that's picking up our trash and recycling?
Yes, it is.
All right. Can you tell him when he comes around, when they pick up the trash and they break glass all over the street? They have a broom on the truck, which the previous one did, to clean it up. I'm tired of going out there when they do it and cleaning the street. This is their job, and they don't do that. So please specify in their contract to clean up whatever debris they leave all over the street, which they do at times. It'll make it helpful instead of having garbage all over. Thank you.
Sure. Anybody else for public comment?
In regards to resolution number seven, I think I mentioned this in the past. If you Google the contractor's name, I mean, the record that he has is horrible. I mentioned that previously about a month or two ago. So I don't see how this individual contractor is a lowest responsible bidder. That's number one. Number two, I'd like an explanation on, when I'm done, on resolution number fourteen with this energy purchase. Is this similar to the last time where the residents have to... Okay, shake it, his head raised, giving me the answer. All right, so you've already got that answer.
He was already ready for it.
All right. Resolution number sixteen, oh, the lead line replacements. I hope they replace the lines before you pave any more streets. I hope that's being considered. Resolution number eighteen, oh, that's for assistant township attorney. Nineteen and twenty, I always was under the impression that the planning board is the only board that picked their own attorney, and they should be, they should do their own advertising. Take it short and sweet today.
Thank you. So, yeah, speaking of that, I had a question, Mr. Manager. We're calling it phase one of lead line replacements, but we've already done four hundred lead line service replacements. So it's phase one of this new phase, I guess?
Yeah, so we're not... This is phase one of part of the four hundred.
Oh, I got you. Okay. And yes, we are, the way that the town engineer decides what streets to do, we're doing it in conjunction with our road approval program. So as we dig up roads that have houses with lead line replacements, we are being smart in doing the lead lines before we pave the roads. And yes, eighteen, whatever the two resolutions were, going out for RFPs or RQs for planning board and zoning board attorney, those responses will be collected and sent to their respective boards, so the board can make their decisions at report. Anybody else for public commenting?
I didn't hear a resolution fourteen. It's a backdoor to an energy aggregation program for the town.
No.
One is exactly true.
How's that?
Right there.
Yeah.
No, this is just for actually town-owned buildings. It's nothing to do with the residents. It's only for our own, for our own usage, for gas and electric. And, uh...
For saving some...
Yeah, fifty thousand dollars, I think, about, by consolidating all of our energy bills into one, and going on the open market. That's it.
Okay.
Nothing to do with residents, just town-owned property.
Yep.
Resolution twenty-five, where is this property?
That Williams Street? Forty-five Williams Street, sir. Can I have...
And, uh...
Somebody put in a price.
Now we have to accept it.
So now we're accepting it.
Accepting it for a thousand dollar award, and then they phrase value it.
Yes.
Forty-five.
This is the undersized lot that crossed from where our old public work garage was?
I think so. That's what's on Williams Street.
I just go to the address sign. Forty-five Williams Street.
It's an undersized lot that was offered to adjacent property owners. We went out for appraisal, appraised the value at sixty-five thousand. This is sixty-six thousand dollar offer that we'll be making.
One of the neighbors is buying that nice room?
Yeah, that's the only way to do it.
All right. And, you know, I don't know if you're aware of this, maybe you come to the meeting, but about six hours, there was a horrendous shooting in Texas. Fourteen little children. They all were the age of my four youngest grandchildren, so I sit down and hope before the means, oh, behold, a moment of silence. Remember that sad event that occurred today.
Any else, ma'am?
Hi, Carol Bagnell, two eighty-seven Fairway. I want to thank you, Tommy, for following up with the Fairway thing, stuff, and the flooding. Does the town then have any other mitigation plans for the flood areas, not just for Fairway, but I guess Mill Street floods and major floodings? That's yours.
The study, the study's...
The study's townwide.
So it's townwide, so it's currently being done? The way is going to be...
No.
So what?
We did our fair.
Yeah, we did, we did advertisement for the engineering companies to submit qualifications. Those proposals will be distributed to council for a discussion at the next meeting.
Okay. And what is the difference between a warning and a violation? So if a golf course got a warning and a cemetery got a violation, and who enforces these things? And who says that any changes?
So the party that issues the warning and the violation, in this case, who is DEP. So my definition of a warning is, don't do it again. You'll get in trouble. Okay? And that's just my interpretation. And a violation is a monetary fine that they would have to pay.
And how long do they have for the violation? I don't remember.
I read it, and I don't believe it's detailed like that, but there is at least a name and an email that we both could follow.
Follow it up, and that's what, if I wanted to follow up on it, that's what...
I would email that, because I did, and I did ask them if I could hand out their email address, and they said absolutely.
Okay.
To the chair, Karen, just had a quick question. Is there a remediation piece of that? That's the other side.
Did you get a copy of it? And if you didn't, I will make sure you have it today, but we received that this week or actually at the end of last week. And it was a violation to the cemetery, but the violation for the cemetery is on the property that was closest to the parkway, not closest to the houses. So that's kind of weird, but then again, two weeks before that, we met, two weeks before that, we met with one DEP investigator, with myself, the chief, and deputy chief call the roll, and he said, "Everything's in compliance." And we said, "Okay." Then we came back to the office, and two weeks later, we got a copy of it. So it's a little confusing, but yes.
Yeah, exactly. Very confusing. And I have another question, just separate or apart from the flooding stuff. The electric bikes and the electric scooters and the electric everything that they have now on the streets, do we have anything in place that our laws or whatever, bylaws or whatever concerning these things? Because some of them go, or they break them up, they're doing thirty-five, forty-five hours an hour, no plates, their kids driving them, some with helmets, some without helmets. Not only is it a danger to the child that's on there or the adolescent that's on there, but it's also a danger to anyone walking the street and/or vehicles driving in the street. I mean, I just, yeah, I mean...
If it's on the street, the police can force it.
Yeah, it goes by...
Yeah, they have no plates, they, you know, and they just run off. I mean, they just...
Yeah, right now, doesn't it?
I mean, they drive, sometimes they come down to the park by Fairway, which, you know, it's a park, so everybody goes down there. But then they race up and down the blocks.
Police can force it.
So that's who I should contact when I see that, you know? Because they just ride all over town, and it's just going to get worse. If you don't put something in place at this point to, so parents know that maybe they have, they'll be monetarily, you know, responsible.
Okay. Anybody else?
Michael Sheldon, forty-seven Floyd Street. Couple of follow-ups from my discussion a few moments ago regarding the defeat of ordinance number three. In the original version of that, I assume it was written by Mr. Martino, it called for appointing four alternate members to the planning board, one for class two, one for class three, and two for class four. Want to read to you the actual statute entitled forty, forty, colon, fifty-five, D, dash twenty-three point one regarding alternate members. It says, "The governing body of any municipality with a separate planning board and board of adjustment, which is valuable, may, by ordinance, provide for the appointment to the planning board of not more than two alternate members, who shall be municipal residents." So the fact that you're trying to appoint four is outright illegal, which is something that Mr. Del Gersio pointed out back on April twelfth, but I guess, you know, the law here is whatever you want it to be, not what is written in code. I wanted to mention that tonight you are bonding yet again for five million dollars. Looking at what's occurred with bonding over the last, just the last year and a half alone, in twenty twenty-one, you bonded for twenty-two million dollars and change. Just a few weeks ago, you bonded for almost twenty-seven million dollars, which brings the running total to forty, almost four, a little over forty-nine million dollars in just the last year and a half alone. Tonight, you're bonding for another five million dollars. So in less than a year and a half time, you're bonding for fifty-five million dollars. You're incurring an enormous amount of bond debt, which is something I think is going to escape the attention of most residents until those payments start to become due. Most of these bond ordinances, most residents are probably not aware of the fact, that they usually carry twenty, twenty-five, thirty-year repayment terms. And with the Fed increasing interest rates now, Mr. Iaccono had said, when I asked him about the bond, the terms for the twenty-seven million dollars, he was hoping for a three and a half percent. You know, dream on at this point. You're lucky now with the Fed expected to raise interest rates four, five, or six times this year. You're lucky if you're going to get anything under four percent, then probably we're going to wind up paying five percent. The fact of the matter is that, you know, the twenty-seven million dollars that you bonded for a month ago is going to wind up costing local residents fifty or more million dollars when all is said and done. People need to be aware of the fact that borrowing money is not cheap, as most of us know all too painfully. I'm glad that Mr. Frantantoni has the question about the one agenda item, number fourteen. Mr. Cazarelli answered that this is not the backdoor GEA effort, which happened a couple years ago in two thousand and nineteen. This is just for the town hall's use and not for residential purposes. I also wanted to comment on the two resolutions, nineteen and twenty, where you're going out for RQs for attorneys for both the planning board and the zoning board. Yes, we all acknowledge that it is up to each board, they have the sole discretionary power to appoint their own attorneys, but what this is doing, this is essentially giving the illusion that you're creating a pre-approved pool of attorneys, and that you're going to turn around and tell these two boards, which have complete autonomy in this matter, that here are the attorneys we've approved as the council, as the governing body, choose from this group, which is, if you effectively do that, that is another gross violation of the law. I, I'm glad, Mr. Melvin, you said a few moments ago that you've never read Mr. Kates' opinion, because you did give a number of media interviews where you literally said, "It's just another attorney's opinion." Mr. Kates is universally...
I think I said it was a paid opinion.
No, no, you said, "It's just another attorney's opinion," as though Mr. Kates is just a schmo, a run-of-the-mill, nondescript attorney. Mr. Kates is universally considered as the preeminent municipal land use law attorney in the state of New Jersey. He largely contributed to the Cox Bible, which is something that every municipal land use law attorney carries by their sides. He regularly consults with judges when they make rulings on these matters.
Thank you. Do need your follow-up, sir.
I'm almost finished. So, you know, for you to say that you didn't, you made comments belittling essentially Mr. Kates without ever reading his opinion, it just once again shows us what your true character is, and there isn't much...
Thank you. Anybody else for public commenting, sir?
Evening, Mayor, Council. First of all, I'd like to congratulate you on all the historical win in the election. I'd like to, I sent an email to you, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you received it or not, telling you also, about the first T senior program.
I replied to it.
Did you? Okay, I'm sorry that I must have believed it, because I've read all my messages. I don't really read them all.
That's not good when you're sending emails, sir.
Well, I haven't read them back. Well, I have a busy schedule this week. But could you inform me what's going on?
Yes, so what I sent an email back to you was, the first T program is not a, like a, a program that the county came up with. It's a nationally recognized program for disadvantaged, usually for disadvantaged youth or youth in low-income areas to expose them to golf. So I don't know if the first T program will do an event for seniors, golfers. The county might be interested in doing that, and they might be interested in using that facility to do so. I think I may have even cced the county on my reply to find out if they were going to give an answer to that, but it would not be the first T program. Maybe the county could do it. If the county does it, I wish I could participate in it.
Yeah, I might have to wait till your senior.
I could definitely...
But the kids are in school during the day.
Right.
The building's empty, and it's two times a week, two times a week would be great. I mean, myself, I would love to, you know, the golf, figure it out, there'd be something to do in the daytime. The other thing is, the dog park, I have an idea with the doggy bags. I know they cost the town money, and you go through them quickly, because they're always replacing them. Is there any way that we can get the local veterinarians to maybe do some advertisement and let them pay for the bags?
I see the manager's diligently taking notes.
I mean, advertise their board, and then maybe...
Good question. Not sure about the answer, but it's a good question.
Donate the bags and help a little bit.
Yeah, can attest.
You know? I mean, we have a veterinarian valve, and there's one in Nutley. I'm sure they'll take care of that, you know? So if you can check into that, or type us a kind of letter, that'd be great. The other thing is, near the dog park, the ramp, I noticed I was going up the ramp, the new ramp in the wall, there's a gap about, you know, about ten inches. You know, if they put something down, maybe...
Is that complete? Because that can't be complete. I've seen exactly what he's talking about.
Yeah, and somebody's going to fall through there.
Small dog.
We're fabricating a piece that's, we go between that.
Let me transition.
Yeah, like a saddle.
If you can keep me informed on the, the dog park thing on the bags, I'll either deliver a letter. I'll be more than glad to go to the veterinarians and...
I should have emailed them.
Thank you so much.
Just don't delete his email.
Yeah.
Anybody else for public commenting? If not, I'll attend a motion to close public commenting?
Second.
Your motion made in second to close public commenting. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumlumberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes. Consent agenda.
I just want to call eight, just because I like to...
What is that?
Eight, the PBA. Yeah, it's one of the...
Twenty-three?
Anybody else?
Twenty-three?
I have eight, so I have twenty-three. That's it. So I'll entertain a motion to move the consent agenda. So with a motion made in second to move the consent agenda with the exception of number eight and twenty-three.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumlumberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes. Next. Next, the resolution table, I suppose that's going to stay there for the time being. New business? Hearing done, we did change the order of the serve, order of the meeting a little bit. We are going to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing police department policy. No action will be taken while we're in executive. We will have to clear the room, unfortunately, but before we adjourn the meeting, you would be invited to come back in, but there's, you would only be coming back in to hear us call for a motion to adjourn. We will not take any action in executive, nor will we take any action when we come out of executive session. With that being said, prior to vacating the room for what we have to do for executive, I am going to ask for a brief moment of silence at this point while everybody's still here for the victims of the Texas Elementary School shootings. Thank you.
Don't forget Buffalo.